Morning, everyone. Welcome to this Tuesday, July 15th, meeting of the Lewis and Clark County Commission. We begin these proceedings by saying to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Candace Payne, the Chair of this particular commission. You will notice that one of our number is missing. Our friend Andy Hunthausen is stuck in Philadelphia. But we're hoping he'll get back soon. So he is not here today. To the right of where Commissioner Hunthausen usually sits is our friends from the county attorney's office, Nico Hash and Kevin Shay. And beyond them is, I hate it when I draw a blank, Roger Balls, our C A O. To my immediate left is my friend Tom Rolfe. Commissioner?
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning. And to his left is Brandy Spangler, our recording secretary. There. We have a sign-in sheet right there in the front on that first ledge. There's also some agendas there if anybody wants one of those. We can start off this little chory with consent action items. Two A presented by Mr. Balls.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioner Rolfe. This is item two A. It's a public meeting minutes from June 3, 17, 19, and 24, and July 3 and 8, 2025. Staff recommends approval. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Roger. Is there any comment from the commission?
None.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, it is time for a motion.
Chair Payne, I move to approve the consent action item two A as explained by Mr. Balls.
Second, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the consent action items as presented by Roger Balls. Is there any further comment from the commission? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the consent action item as presented by Roger Balls indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Ah ha. Okay, action item three A, contract between Lewis and Clark County and Bullock Contracting LLC as presented by our friend Jessica Makas.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolfe. My name is Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Before you this morning is a contract with Bullock Contracting LLC to correct and repair the gravel road surface within the Oleo Acres Rural Improvement District. The scope of this contract includes preparing, supplying, hauling, placing, watering, grading, and compacting 1,214 cubic yards of road mix on the full extent of Brooklyn Drive. This contract was procured through a limited solicitation and Bullock Contracting LLC provided the lowest quoted cost. Contract compensation is based on the unit price of $24 per cubic yard for an estimated total of 1,214 cubic yards of crushed surfacing. Funding for this project will come from an intercap loan from the Montana Board of Investments, which was approved by the commission to fund improvements in the R I D. The loan will be repaid through a 15-year debt assessment of $171 per property per year until the loan is repaid. There are a total of 30 properties in the R I D. You can see it on your screen, highlighted in green surrounding Brooklyn Drive. The project was estimated at approximately $40,000, so this is anticipated to come in under budget. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Bullock Contracting LLC for an estimated total sum not to exceed $29,136.0 and authorize the chair to sign all applicable contract documents. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions from the commission?
So if I might, we've got a little lower bid than we expected on this.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, that's correct. Yes, this price was very good. We were really pleased to see it, so happy to move forward with this.
So that'll make it a little easier on the people in the district then.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, it should. So when we do these intercap loans, we put an initial application in, but the actual debt is for the actual construction costs. So we'll reconcile that once the project is complete, and we should be able to potentially lower that debt assessment down.
Good. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion, Tom.
Chair Payne, I move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Bullock Contracting LLC as explained by Jessica Makas.
Second, it has been moved and seconded that we approve this contract as presented by Jessica Makas. Is there any further comments from the commission?
None.
Seeing no further comment. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Bullock Contracting LLC. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jessica. Item three B, Resolution 2025-59 to abandon a portion of Farmview Drive, a county road, will be presented to us by Mr. Phil Gonzalez. Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you mentioned, Phil Gonzalez here to present Resolution 2025-59. It is a resolution to abandon a portion of Farmview Drive. The applicant is Chad and Wade Bachmeier. As you can see from the vicinity map on the screen, Farmview Drive is located within the Bachmeier subdivision, which is off of Highway 12 East, the city of Helena. The subdivision has five lots. Three of them are used for residential purposes. One of them is undeveloped, and the smaller one towards the south is, contains a billboard. So Farmview Drive was created at the time of final plat of the Bachmeier subdivision. That subdivision was platted in 2006. You can see on the plat here towards the bottom corner where my arrow is, Highway 12, the five-lot subdivision coming up here, and Farmview Drive being platted along that western portion, giving access off Highway 12 to those five lots, you can see here. So the physical road, Farmview Drive, as you saw from the plat, was recently removed by the M D T as part of a safety and road widening project, which combined two approaches onto the east side of Lot 2 of the Bachmeier subdivision. So this is the original approach here. You can see the subdivision, Farmview Drive coming off Highway 12, and then the neighboring property, the concrete plant, those two approaches. The project was to combine those approaches to a single approach opposite South Mitchell Road. So here's a modern aerial. Now that work has been completed, again, you can see those approaches being removed, and a new approach, a new Farmview Drive, being put in right here. So this resolution essentially is the final step on the process of kind of encapsulating that change in development. So just some background, over the last few years that we've been working on this project, the applicant submitted a road abandonment request back in December of 2023. This board approved their resolution 2023-104 to declare Farmview Drive a county road, and that date also ordered an investigation in abandoning Farmview Drive. A site visit was conducted with county staff and Commissioner Payne on January 3 of 2024. Then the B, this board conditionally approved an abandonment of Farmview Drive on April 9, 2024, subject to three conditions. So as those conditions have been met, staff is recommending approval of this resolution to abandon that portion of Farmview Drive, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. What, just refresh my mind, what were the three conditions of approval?
Certainly. So those three conditions were, one, that the applicant submits a certificate of survey, which shows that that portion of Farmview Drive is abandoned, and showing the resolution identification number that'll go onto that plat. So essentially, the next agenda item, which is the final plat of the Bachmeier subdivision, is that recorded survey. So that survey will contain this resolution number and I D.
Okay.
Number two was to show proper documentation that the applicants are the lawful owners of that property, which they have, and three, that the preliminary approval that you, this board, gave in 2024, excuse me, April in 2024 would not, would be, would be, that this work would be completed within two years, so a two-year approval from April 9, 2024. So those are the three conditions of approval that this abandonment was given.
Thank you, Phil. I, as I recall, there was some question about access to the lot that has the advertising board on it. Has that been resolved?
Correct. So that was a part of the, of the, of the preliminary plat approval for access, because there was an easement that was created to go through Lot 2 here to access Lot 1. That was approved by this board as part of the preliminary approval, because as the subdivision regulations require, all lots must have physical and legal access. So this lot lost its access off of Highway 12, which was their legal and physical access. So now that it had to go through Lot 2, that easement was secured, but that approval had to be approved by this board.
Thank you. I know it was something like that, and I drive by that billboard every once in a while and think, wonder if we have access yet. So Commissioner Rolfe, do you have any other comments?
No, I think it's pretty well explained on the maps we've seen, and it looks like they meet all the, all the conditions of approval. Seems to me that's, it's pretty much done.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion, Tom.
Chair Payne, I move to approve Resolution 2025-59 to abandon a portion of Farmview Drive, which is a county road, as explained by Phil Gonzalez.
Second, it has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-59. Is there any further comment from the commission?
None.
Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Phil. Next is action item three C, which is also presented by Phil, and it is the final plat application for the amended plat of the Bachmeier Minor Subdivision, S U B D 2025-008. Applicant is Chad and Wade Bachmeier, and this will be presented by Phil Gonzalez. Go for it, Phil.
Thank you. Again, Phil Gonzalez here with Community Development and Planning, presenting the final plat approval for Bachmeier Minor Subdivision amended plat, as you mentioned, project number 2025-8. Again, just for the record, the vicinity map shows the Bachmeier subdivision here off of Highway 12 East of the city of Helena. As I mentioned, the subdivision has five lots. Three of them are currently being used for residential purposes. One is undeveloped, and one containing a billboard. The, this amended plat only is subject to two of those lots, that undeveloped lot, and the one lot containing a billboard. So this is the amended plat that the applicant is filing, as you saw the previous one that was completed in 2006. This most recent one contains, as we've been describing, that abandonment of Farmview Drive, which was here, where you see Lot 1, where that billboard is. Farmview Drive came up here, provided access to all five lots with information of that resolution that was approved. We'll go here. The new Farmview Drive will be coming up here just to the, to the right, providing access to all those lots, that easement to Lot 1 comes here. That was approved by this board during the preliminary plat approval. And then access to the concrete plant comes through here and here. So all of this is being captured in this amended plat process. So the applicant submitted this amended plat application April 4 of 2023. As I mentioned, this board conditionally approved it July 18 of 2023. It was subject to 14 conditions. The applicant submitted the final plat application on February 6 of this year, 2025. So as we usually, staff usually goes through those conditions and how they have been met, I will quickly do that as of now. Condition number one.
No, we're not in a hurry. This is important stuff. I appreciate the detail that you provide for us, so go for it.
Wonderful, thank you. Condition number one was related to wastewater and water systems approvals through D E Q and the county's Public Health and Environmental Division. As part of that condition of approval, the applicant has provided information of a modified site plan that was approved by the county's environmental health department that shows a relocation of a stormwater pond. That was, site plan was filed with, with D E Q as well. Condition of approval number two relates to amended restrictive covenants. Those covenants, draft covenants, have been signed and notarized and provided by the applicant to our office, completing condition number two. Condition number three is related to a five-year management plan, a revegetation plan. The applicant has provided to the county we district for review and approval. That was done November 27 of 2024. Condition of approval number four relates to the internal access roads, that they shall provide legal and physical access to all lots, and then that those roads to be certified by an engineer registered in the state of Montana and approved by, and meeting county standards. The applicant has provided a letter from County Works, Dan Carlin, dated March 12, 2025, giving concurrence on road certification. Condition of approval number five relates to a subdivision plat meeting and being in accordance with the applicable state survey requirements and all of the items listed in the staff report, A through H, which relate to the specific work to abandon Farmview Drive. To meet that condition, the applicant has submitted that final plat survey, which we've seen here right on the screen. Condition of approval number six relates to the abandonment of the county road, Farmview Drive. The applicant has met that condition, as this board has just approved that resolution to abandon Farmview Drive, a portion of it. Condition of approval number seven relates to stormwater drainage. That applicant has provided a stormwater drainage plan, which referenced the environmental health modified site plan, which was approved April 19 of 2023. The applicant has also submitted photos documenting this new stormwater detention pond as part of their application. Condition of approval number eight requires the applicant to submit a signage plan for traffic control and street identification for the internal access roads, providing legal, physical access. The applicant has provided, as part of the application, that signage plan for traffic control and street signs. That signage plan was reviewed and approved by Community Development and Planning, as well as our Public Works Department. Condition of approval number nine, the applicant must apply for address assignments for all lots in the subdivision and install address plaques for Lot number two. As a, meaning that condition, the applicant did meet, get new addresses and address plaques for Lot number two. Condition of approval number 10 requires that the lawful owner of the property show any names of lien holders or claimants of record. The applicant has submitted a subdivision guarantee provided from Old Republic National Title Company dated November 1, 2024, providing evidence that the applicant is the lawful owner, and there are no additional lien holders. Condition of approval number 11 relates to the Montana Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, M P D E S, which is required if there is ground disturbances that exceed one acre in size. This project did not exceed that one acre in ground disturbance, so it was not required. Condition of approval number 12 requires that the applicant submit for final plat approval within three calendar years of the preliminary approval. That preliminary approval was given July 18 of 2023, so we are within that three-year approval period. Condition number 13 relates to documentation from the United States Postal Service verifying their review and approval of mailboxes. The applicant has provided documentation, a letter from the United States Postal Service, Representative Bert Krisherman, dated June 12, 2025, that the existing mailbox facilities located off Highway 12 were sufficient in meeting the needs of the subdivision at this time. And the final condition of approval number 14 relates to the ability for improvements otherwise not completed to be financially guaranteed at a later date as they relate to the M P D E S permits, weed management plan, or installation of mail delivery facilities. This condition has been met as no improvements were needed to be financially guaranteed. So those are the 14 conditions of approval for the final plat application. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Phil, could you go back to the map? I'm interested in the location of the stormwater drainage pond or facility. Could you show me on the map where that?
Certainly. So the, the new stormwater drainage plan, the original one was located right here, which was in the location of the new Farmview Drive. So that was removed when M D T built this road, and a new stormwater drainage plan was put right here, right below Farmview Drive.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any questions for Phil?
No, it appears that all of the, of the 14 requests were, were met. All of the, all recommended, and the staff is recommending approval. There doesn't seem to be, do we need to go through and talk about each one of those items a little bit?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, so because this is a final plat, I think that the presentation by Mr. Gonzalez discussing that each of those conditions of approval have been met is sufficient for a final plat approval.
Okay. All right. So that, so I prepared to do that. We've looked at it, staff's looked at it. I think everybody's considered it very, very well, so I guess that's my main concern.
Hey, good question there, Tom. And you have already answered the only question I came up with. Is there any, any public comment? Seeing none. Can we have a motion, please?
Chair Payne, I would move for final, to approve final plat application for the amended plat of the Bachmeier Minor Subdivision, subdivision 02025-008. Applicants, by applicants Chad and Wade Bachmeier, as explained by Phil Gonzalez.
Second, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the final plat application for this amended plat of the Bachmeier Minor Subdivision, number S U B D 2025-008.
I'm glad you caught that. I didn't, I read it wrong.
You read it as another zero on there, and I just wanted to make sure we have the, the record is, it is S U B as in Boyd, D as in David, 2025. Okay. Is there any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of this, of approving this final plat application indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Phil. And now, we have come to the part of our hearing where we have a presentation regarding the public hearing, a Lewis and Clark County's... Public hearing. Why is there an A at the end of the public hearing? On, do you, does that mean anything? Heavy finger. Lewis and Clark County's preliminary budget for fiscal year 2026 to be presented by Mr. Frank Cornwell. Go for it, Frank.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. For the record, my name is Frank Cornwell. I am the Chief Financial Officer of the county. I will be presenting the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2026 today. We have already gone through this presentation two and a half weeks ago, so this will be maybe a little quicker than what we've seen. Note that on July 22, we'll have our final adoption of the resolution.
You know, there is no race. We don't have to hurry up. We've got enough time. We've paid the rent on this place, so you do what needs to be done. Make sure we understand it.
Absolutely. Yeah, as a reminder that this is, again, this is the work of all our departments, all our financial folks, all our department heads, everybody putting in the time to build these budgets starting in, in March. So this is the result of that work. And this, and also, we always share the commission goals. I always like to point out number two and four, the engagement of the long-term planning in efficiently and effectively managing public resources, which are these funds that we're budgeting for. We'll start off with looking at the overall expenditures at $130 million. We'll point out that we've budgeted $40.2 million for personnel. That is an increase that is from prior year due to a COLA or a cost of living adjustment of 2.1% or 2.13%. And some health insurance costs have gone up as well. But overall, there is a 1.76 increase, a percent increase from last year. Not a significant increase, it's pretty, pretty minor. Going into the revenues for, the overall revenues for the county, we're seeing them up at $104.1 million. The increase in revenue is attributed to the inflationary factor, which is a 2.1% and a, which is the three-year average of the Consumer Price Index. We see that every year. This is a pretty high year at 2.11%. Also, we are estimating a conservative... Also, we are estimating a conservative growth factor of one percent, uh, that will affect our revenues for property taxes this year. Uh, we're not anticipating overall revenues to increase significantly, only going up by two-point-one-five percent.
Yes, Tom?
We show a net decrease in county reserves, and I assume you're gonna, I believe that's more fully explained further down.
Yes.
In behind there, but, um, we will, I wanna go back and talk about that when you get, get there a little bit, okay?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, yes, we will absolutely. I actually have a slide for that number specifically. It's a, always seems, every year, it seems like a very big number, and it seems scary, but it is something that we manage, and is it, it is an expected, um, uh, a decrease year over year. It's usually due, due to rolling over of projects, CIP jobs, or, uh, capital projects. And it's, it's a very normal thing. So we, we expect to spend reserves, uh, on an annual basis. Or budget to spend reserves, sorry.
Great. Thank you.
Going to the all-purpose fund, um, or our general fund, uh, we are seeing our revenue projections for two thousand and twenty-six to be at twenty-point-two million dollars. That is a three-point, um, oh, sorry. That is the expenditure projections at twenty-point-two million dollars, and that is a three-point-seven percent increase from the prior year. Most of that increase is due to the cost of living adjustment and the health plan expenses that we've seen, um, increase year over year. And, yeah, predominantly that. Also, we also have a very busy election year coming ahead of us. We have four separate elections, which causes, um, additional amount of resources to be, uh, budgeted for. Going into the revenue projections for next, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, uh, we're projecting a seventeen-point-three-million-dollar revenue. Um, that is a eight-point-three-nine percent increase from prior year. Uh, a little bit of that is to do to our health insurance, uh, permissive levy going up to help offset those insurance costs that are in, applied to the county. Outside of that, and then also our local option tax, or.
Frank, I'm confused. Okay, we're on this, and it is slide number six.
Yes.
One, yes. And so the net decrease in the all-purpose fund reserves is two-point-eight million.
Yes.
And the total revenue increased. So I'm, I'm confused as to why that line shows a decrease in the reserves, and then the next note says the revenue increased by eight-point-three-nine percent. So.
Well, I can, uh, Chair Payne, I'll clarify that for you.
Oh, I hope so.
So, yeah, the way I like kinda look when I'm building these, um, these, uh, slide decks, is that you kinda gotta look at the slide five along with slide six. And so you, it's the twenty-point-two million dollars, uh, minus, or actually, yeah, it actually be the seventeen-point-three million dollars minus the twenty-point-two million dollars on slide five. The net difference between those two is two-point-eight million in the decrease in reserves. What we're showing as the note, that is just a note to show year-over-year change from twenty-five to twenty-six in that, uh, from seventeen, uh, well, how we got up to seventeen-point-three million dollars. So last year, we were at about sixteen million dollars in revenue projections for the all-purpose fund. And so we're showing a one, one-point-three-million-dollar increase from two thousand and twenty-five. And that's.
I'm sorry, I am still not following this. So it would, it maybe if you just said the same thing again, I would catch it.
No worries. So the, I'll start with the, the revenue increase. The one-point-three million, the one on the bottom, that is the increase from the prior year. So that's, uh, what we projected for two thousand and twenty-five. And that would be around sixteen million dollars, what we project over two thousand and twenty-five. And now we're projecting for two thousand and twenty-six, a total revenue for the all-purpose fund at seventeen-point-three million dollars. The net decrease is just the year-over-year, uh, budgeted change, um, in op- I guess it'd be the difference between your operating expenses, budgeted operating expenses, and what we budgeted for operating revenue. It's, uh, trying to come up. Ever, do you have a, a specific question on how you wanna, go ahead and ask it. Maybe, maybe if you.
It would probably be helpful if you explained it in German, because the, these terms are not user-friendly to me. Now, Tom, does this make sense to you? Do you understand what he has been talking about? See, he speaks the language. I don't. Um, and I have a lot of, uh, faith in Tom's ability, uh, as a num- number cruncher. So I think we can move on.
Okay. And Commissioner, if you ever wanna come by and we can chat and I can share you with the.
But you still speak that funny language.
Yeah, it's a whole down.
Yes, go ahead.
So, uh, slide seven is focusing on just the personnel changes, the major, when it comes to the expenses of personnel. Uh, we, we've mentioned the, the matrix adjustment or the cost of living adjustment at two-point-one-three percent. Um, all staff, we've budgeted step increases for everyone, and a increase in health insurance premium at two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars per employee per month. Also, for staffing, we have increased FTE by two-point-oh-nine. FTE, uh, showing these three positions, the full, uh, we're adding a FTE for, um, uh, the elections folks for a clerk due to the, we all know that there's an additional amount of work that has been thrown at the, that department, mainly due to new compliance rules, additional audits, additional work that they, they just have no choice, but they have to execute. Um, we also are, are making a point-nine-one FTE up to a full-time FTE. It didn't make sense to have somebody that close to full-time to not just go ahead and just round them off to a, a, a full FTE. That's what that point-oh-nine is. And then also, we added to the county, uh, a position that we budgeted for, for many, many years, but we just didn't add the actual FTE into the budget. Um, so this is just doing that for the planning department, uh, new project manager. And slide nine, we're, just to kinda reiterate, like, we, we do year in, year out, we were retaining our current service levels and programs. So this is a successful budget going for this fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-six. Um, so that's a good result. And then here's a list of our initiatives. Um, the mental health, diversion services, liability and health insurance is something we're constantly working on. Hopefully, this will fall off one of these years. Capital projects will always be a priority for the, the county. Building security has, has been something that we've been ramping up, um, for the last couple of years on something that we really need to focus on. And then I added for this one, cause I actually just had a meeting on, on this yesterday and I forgot. This is actually gonna be quite a bit of a lift um, in two thousand and twenty-six and twenty, and I would actually, in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-seven.
Are you talking about the building security and storage?
No.
Segment?
No, Chair, Chair Payne, I added, uh, the MS four designation and implementation.
And it's supposed to, uh, okay, thank you.
That's, that's, um, something I didn't include in my last presentation. I included it on this one because I wanted to make sure that, I think everybody knows that it's gonna be quite a distraction this year, and we're gonna throw a lot of resources at it. We, we have a workforce team that's working on, working on implementation. We have folks in planning, public works, public health, finance. Um, we're all working on the, the, the new designation here, and we have no choice, but we have to do this. As the state of Montana has designated this on us, and we're gonna have to follow the, um, implementation.
And did they give, did the state of Montana give us extra funding to support this, or is this digging out of our regular coffers?
Chair Payne, uh, this is an unfunded mandate.
Exactly. Thank you.
Uh, we'll go into our capital improvement funds, just overall. We are transferring in four-point-four million dollars into our capital improvement funds, and we have budgeted to spend ten-point-eight million dollars of capital. Um, some other funds that are outside of that main capital improvement fund, we like, we separate these out, which is RID projects at four-hundred-thousand dollars, and the road and bridge projects at four, at five-point-two million dollars. Um, just like to point out, that leaves us about twelve million dollars in reserves for capital improvement. Oh, and that's on the next slide, so I didn't need to point that out on that one. But the, uh, so for countywide reserves, we're estimated to be at thirty-seven percent at the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. Um, of all expenditures of forty-eight-point-three million dollars. Countywide operating reserves are estimated to be at thirty-one percent of expenditures um, at thirty-six-point-one million dollars. All-purpose fund operating reserves are estimated to be at twenty-seven percent of expenditures, or five-point-five million dollars. Um, just reiterate, our, our county goal is to have operating funds at a minimum and staying above the twenty-five percent. When we project out at the end of the year, we've, we have achieved that with all of our budgets across the board, so very successful budget going forward. Uh, capital reserves, like I said earlier, are estimated to be at twelve-point-one million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-six. Here's an example that we like to provide you guys for, um, what we see with the uh, mill levy increases in revenue. Um, this is isolating the all-purpose fund. We're expecting a revenue increase of one million dollars or two-point-nine percent for the all-purpose fund mill levy. Uh, that the estimated growth factor is at one percent, or giving us a thirty, or a three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-dollar increase. The inflationary growth factor is at two-point-one-one percent, which will give us seven-hundred-and-one thousand dollars. And then we're required to in- to include these estimates of what the impact of these mill levies will be on homeowners, uh, the one-hundred-and-three-hundred-and-six-hundred-thousand-dollar variety. These are estimates based off of, of last year's certified values. That is the only data that we have available. We know that these will change, because we do not receive our certified values coming in until August. And we know just through what we've seen in the media, in the newspaper, we also know that this is a um, reappraisal year. So we know that values of the homes are gonna change, values of, of commercial property is gonna change. So this is, this is a estimate based off of the only data we have, which is last year's data. But as the new data comes in, in August, we will make sure this shores up. I do, I, I do feel comfortable saying homeowner, uh, pro- uh, property taxes will go down. We just don't know how much until September, when we do those calcu- those final calculations. Um, so I think this is an unfortunate, we have to put this on here because we're required by state law to discuss this, but it is, it's using data from the prior year, so that we know that this is gonna, this is gonna change.
Um, so there will be a decrease in most taxes, property taxes. Um, is this, this is based on the work that legislature just did? And does this include only homes, or does this include my pasture and the, you know, other property that is not a home?
Chair Payne, we're only required to include home values for a hundred-and-three-hundred-and-six-hundred-thousand dollars. That's the homeowner focus that the, the law requires.
Thank you.
And.
Go ahead, Tom.
There, excuse me. Chair Payne, as I, uh, might add, add there, as I've looked at it, trying to understand what the new law does, it would appear to me that, that, well, uh, homes and long-term rentals will come down a little bit. Um, large, very expensive vacation homes, the va- the, the tax is gonna raise. Homes that have a value of over a million and a half, the, the, the taxes could well raise. Um, and some, there, there probably some commercial properties. Uh, all short-term rentals, like VRBOs, the, the taxes are gonna go up on, on those. But homeowners and, and people in long-term rental for residential property have arg- those, those taxes should come down a little bit.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, that is absolutely correct. Uh, they are, the, the legislature decided to move some of the taxable value to, or who is gonna pay the taxes to a different, to the higher-end homes, to the law, to these rental homes, uh, and, and some commercial property. But it is, at the end of the day, this doesn't mean this is a cut to revenues for the, for the county. The county isn't gonna receive less money. It's just the folks that are paying for the rev- for the revenue coming into the county, and schools and everyone else, will, will be shifted to a different taxing entity. So this is that slide I promised Commissioner Ralph. Um, so we have this large decrease in reserves of twenty-five-point-nine million dollars. This is how we achieve it. So we have fully budgeted to spend down the open space projects. That is something we do. If there's any monies available there, we, we budget to fully spend that down. We have a seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars left. Uh, maintenance districts at six-point-seven million dollars, capital reserve spending at nine million dollars. We still have a one-point-one-million-dollar, uh, budgeted, um, or I guess, uh, funds available for ARPA. And those will be hopefully expended by the end of this year, I believe, or next year. I'm not quite sure on the time. I think by the end of next year, they need to be spent down, uh, next calendar year, I think.
Um, what?
So for.
ARPA?
ARPA, yeah.
Okay, first we had to designate what we were going to use it for, but before a certain date. Is that correct?
Right, yep, yep.
And now we're into the part where we're actually spending the money, and the money must be spent before a certain.
Yep.
Calendar, not our, on our fiscal calendar, but on the.
Calendar year, yeah.
Okay.
So I think it has to be spent by twenty, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion there. Um, and then the remaining amount of spend down is from our operating reserves of eight-point-two-million dollars. That still achieves the twenty-five percent minimum. Most of these, uh, departments are achieving a much higher percent, closer to sixty percent reserves, even after spending this much of their reserves. So very healthy, very normal. This is business as usual. I go the other way. And just again, pointing out, on July twenty-second, we're gonna have our final adoption of this budget, and it'll include a resolution. And, um, yeah, I'm not quite, if you have any other questions, please let me know.
Yeah, Chair Payne, if I might.
Tom?
Wait, could we take a few minutes and just talk a little bit about the, the capital project for those in, maybe who are watching on, on video of what's going on here? This is, this is to me, one of the wonderful surprises I found when I became a county commissioner is the financial care that is taken of our county by you folks. And you've been here, what now, three years?
Yeah.
And you've carried that on in an exemplary manner. But we plan for capital expenditures. And can you give some examples of how some of the projects that we're going to be spending money on this, this next year that we've been saving for?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, an example would be the sheriff's vehicles. They, they go through vehicles pretty quickly. They have a capital improvement plan to help pay for those vehicles because, which is a savings account that they have been contributing to on an annual basis that allows them to purchase those vehicles straight up. They don't have to, they don't have to do a loan, they don't have to do a leasing program. They are afforded to go ahead and replace those vehicles immediately when they become available or if prices have come down and, or when, you know, hopefully we get to the end of the life of a vehicle and it hasn't gotten into a rack and they hadn't have a damage it, it's just, it's just the end of the life of it. It needs to be replaced. We're ready to, to replace those vehicles on the spot at the best value that we can, we can. And also because of the, these are savings accounts, these savings accounts earn interest as opposed to when you incur debt, you're going to pay interest on it. Or if you do a leasing program, you're going to pay interest on that as well. So we're, we're able to be very nimble from a financial standpoint. These capital improvement plans take a very long time to build. It's, I believe it's been 13, 14 years to build these up. And I, I can't imagine how difficult that was in the beginning because you had to make sacrifices in your operating budget. You, you, you're basically sacrificing a portion of that operating budget to go towards something in the future on an annual basis. And we know these departments like to, to operate at as high of a service level as they possibly can achieve. And so that's a sacrifice each one of them has made in order to achieve these capital improvement plans. In the beginning, it had to have been real tough because those contributions had to have been very big. Now they can manage those contributions into those plans much more effectively and they, they're used to it. They just build them right into their budget. So if you have a, if you have a plan that says you need to be contributing $100,000 in order to save for these vehicles to be replaced in the future, you will, they are ready to do that. They, they're, it's normalized, it's something they're used to. They're, they don't push back on them at all. So, and I think all of them have, have seen the advantages of these CIP plans that it really has put us in the, in the driver's seat when it comes to specifically savings and the interest earned for the county.
And if I might, if we take a look at, at page three on your present, presentation, we look at the debt service level of, of 1.5% of our total expenditures. I don't think there are very many local governments that have a, have a debt service level that low. And, and basically what, what is in that 1.5?
The, those are pretty, I would say benign or you, there are RIDs. So when Jessica comes up and she presents those, the special districts, a lot of those will take on inter cap loans and then they pay those off. So I see, I think the majority of it is that. Also the open space bonds, we have some bonds that are available, that are part of that. And I think it's pretty much the open space bonds and then, and the special district. That's pretty much it.
Paying off like the detention center?
Yes, that's another bond, yes. Yep. That's the other one.
But, but basically the money to do capital expenditures isn't borrowed. It is, it's money already in a savings account and it's costing us, it's probably costing us less this way because, because we're looking, we, we have the flexibility to look for the right time to purchase instead of being forced to do it when something breaks.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, absolutely. Yes.
This, this, I, I, I keep calling it the Dave Ramsey plan of, of financial management for, for local government and you folks really do it well. And I really appreciate that. I, I wish that the public understood how good a job you're doing. And I keep shouting about it every place I go.
Really fine.
Even when there's tough decisions to be made, you know? It's, it's handled so, so well. Could we take a, a couple of minutes? And talk about the, the difference in tax revenue between this, this current, or the past fiscal year and this current, this current win that we're talking about here?
Yeah. Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, just so, so the difference between, and this is going to come out in a lot more detail when we, when we pass the mill levies in September. We, we provide you with a overall breakdown of the differences between year over year fund by fund type. Or mill levy type by mill levy type. The, basically the difference between this year and last year is the inflationary factor, the growth factor, the permissive levy that we're, that we're seeing year over year. So we, we did a, we maxed out the permissive levy this year. So that's a.
That's the permission levy for our, for our health, health plan.
Yes.
And maybe we need to explain just a little bit where, where we're, because for many, many years, we were not, we have not taken the maximum out to pay for the health plan of our, our people. But we've had, but we self insure and we've had some pretty healthy things and we're trying to do the right thing to have a competitive health plan so that good employees stick around with us and rather than retraining people all the time. And, and, but it's worked really well, but this last couple of years, we've had some pretty healthy losses in that plan and we, we have to take the full permissive levy now to do, to do that.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Ralph, we'll, we'll explain there. I, I totally agree. It is my goal to get that back down, to, to no longer have to max that mill levy out. And I think we're on the right path. It's just, we can't control the, some of the events that are happening within the claims of, of a self insured pool. It's just, it's unfortunate that we've had a higher claims the last few years. Hopefully that'll, we'll catch up to those, we'll calm down, we'll build up a reserve with the help of arts actuary who's given us a good, clean path on how to achieve the, 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 the reserves that we need in order to maintain a good health plan and stay health, self insured. I, I feel really confident going forward and hopefully we, we won't have to max that out again in the future.
But let's talk about that, that increase in taxes that we, that you and I chatted about a little bit yesterday. That, where's a good, the, the tax revenue, we're just short of 43 million that we're anticipating. And the, the year before, or this, this year that's just finished, the tax revenue was just over 40 million.
Correct.
40.3, is that right?
Yep.
So we're, we're talking about a 2.7 million dollar increase.
Correct.
In tax revenue. About a one, about, about a million of that is that, that health fund, isn't it?
Correct.
And then, yeah, that leaves us about a million seven.
For operating.
And part of that's because of new properties we anticipating being tax, having, coming under tax, that are, have been appraised by the state for the first time. And part of that is, is because of inflationary increase and we, and we aren't really aren't accounting for the full, full inflationary increase that we could get.
Correct.
There.
Right.
So we're, we're being very cautious about, about the, the direct property tax that our, that our people are, are having to pay to keep county government going.
Absolutely. I agree.
And I, I just think, I think that folks need to know that and to, to understand that we're, we're trying to run this, we're saving them money by not borrowing a bunch of money, planning ahead with expenditures. We're saving them money by, by buying things when it's to our advantage to buy them rather than when we, we're in a bind. We're saving them, we're saving folks money and we have for many years saved money on our health insurance plan because we've had pretty good savings and we haven't used, had, had to use that extra. So I, I really think that we're trying to do this in a very fiscally responsible manner and yet provide the, the, the services and take care of emergencies that come about, come up with that we, we deal with from time to time, bridges that all of a sudden don't work and, and roads that you go in a disrepair or building problems on some of these older buildings that we, that we maintain that, that just because of the rage, you have to do some extra things. But I really believe that this, that, that Lewis and Clark County is, is the shining example in Montana of fiscal, being fiscally responsible of any local government in the state of Montana. And I really appreciate what you're doing. I think you're doing a great job. You, you work through this, your staff works with you well, trying to do the right thing.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Much appreciated.
I think part of the benefit of having the three commissioners is each one of us has a little area where based on our last 40 years of our lives, we've experienced a lot of this. And Tom's comments about the Dave Ramsey method, there may be people who are not familiar with it, but by golly, I am. I, I may not understand it entirely, but at least I recognize you've got to put money away, you've got to have a little savings because you know you're going to have hard times and you better have some money in the bank to take care of it. And Lewis and Clark County is. So thank you for going through that, Tom. You're much better at describing fiscal issues than I am.
Well, the, the number nerd in me that wants to, to talk about that stuff, I bore, I bore my family to death, but. But I, I, I think it's important and I think it's important that the public know that we're trying and, and that you guys, you in the, in the, in the finance operation are doing a heck of a job of keeping, of, of being fiscally responsible and, and taking care of the, of the taxpayers of Lewis and Clark County.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Frank. Now we don't have to do a motion or anything. Do we need to do a motion approving? Is that what we're doing?
Chair Payne and Commissioner Ralph, if I could just interject quickly.
Yes.
Yes, when, when you're finished with your deliberations, questions, discussions, if you could consider a motion to approve Lewis and Clark County preliminary budget for fiscal year 2026 as presented by Mr. Cornwell today, that would be an appropriate thing for you to consider.
So moved.
By golly, you guys are really efficient. Seconded.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, we also need to take public comment on this issue.
Oh, yes. See, what a team, what a team. Is there any public comment out there? I think Phil's the only one still here. Phil, you want to say anything? No public comment. Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Did I second it? I did, okay. That we approve the Lewis and Clark County preliminary budget for fiscal year 2026 as presented by Mr. Frank Cornwell. Any further comment? We've commented out, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I beg your pardon? Oh, thank you Frank. Okay, we have come to the part of our agenda for public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda above. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.